Let me open a city council agenda for public hearing meeting on Monday, August 31st, 2020, 6:30 PM. We're conducting this public hearing via telephonic methods with audio conferencing. And if you'll join me, we will call to order this particular public hearing. Moving to item number two is roll call and certification of the quorum. City says our mayor pro tem has just verified that all the council members are here with smiling faces.
All present.
Madam Secretary, I certify our quorum for this meeting tonight. Moving item number three is public hearing. And of course, public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2020 to 21, the budget. And item number four would be staff review, and I'll call on your person to lead us off on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a presentation. This is an important requirement and step in the ongoing process for your review and consideration of a city budget starting October 1. And we've been through, as council knows, a series of meetings and dialogue and questions and followed up to answer those. We will have scheduled the first reading at your first meeting in September. And we will have the last of the questions that were brought up at the last meeting. We'll provide those this week or early next and get those to you. So you'll have those to add to the discussion. But tonight I'll turn over to Mr. McCarter. He'll walk you through a overview, just so we can have that for the presentation here of the budget before the public hearings. Mr. McCarter.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John McCarter, interim finance director here with the city. As Mr. Pearson mentioned, tonight we are here for the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 budget. Just a refresher for those who have not been following along through the process. This is a process that started all the way back in February with the early budget input session. The presentation of the capital improvement plan back in July, ultimate adoption occurred in September. And then we've had three discussions just over the last month or so, which brings us to today. The public hearing on the budget, Monday, August 31st. Looking ahead, we'll have two readings coming up, one on the 14th and one on the 28th. For four different ordinances, the first for the tax rate, the budget and pay plan, and then two separate ordinances for the fees as well. Do want to add an important note here that this public hearing is for the proposed budget. So this will be the budget back on August 1st that was proposed. We've gone through and we've made some adjustments, and I'll note those as we go through the presentation. But all that will be rolled up into what comes to city council on the 14th, along with those follow-up notes and important pieces of information from last time in a packet, just like we've been doing all along. So the content for tonight will be really what was proposed back in August, August 1st. So looking at the general fund highlights as we dive into the content here tonight. On the safe community side, we have 12 new firefighters. That's our latest phase of continuous onboard and gearing us up to open up fire station number eight. Two sworn police officers for the police department, along with police vehicle replacements around $1 million. Cybersecurity training here, $9,000 split between general fund and water and sewer fund. Sustainable infrastructure, street and sidewalk funding at 1.5 million. This did increase about $200,000 based on council feedback and consensus direction. We'll include that in the amount for the upcoming first reading, but that amount is in here. And the citizen survey for the engaged community, the amount of $30,000. Under the fiscally responsible header here, we have our cost of living or COLA. That is an increase of 2% across the board for all employees. And then step pay, that is for civil service, police officers, and longevity paid out, depending on how long an employee's been with the city. All that together, about $1.55 million across all funds. What's not in this budget, obviously a very important slide. We first and foremost start out with our street and sidewalk, which was a focus of much discussion this year, as it always is. We are short of our target mark by about 3.3 million. After the additional allocation, it will be closer to $3.1 million to maintain our pavement condition index or PCI index. $23.6 million in eligible general fund vehicle replacements. That's across all departments. That's just the amount of vehicles that meet the replacement criteria as set forth by our fleet department. And then $5 million in supplemental staffing requests in the general fund. This is always far and away the most popular item requested. As we're a growing city, we need staff to keep up with the growing demand associated with that. The need is greatest in public safety in terms of the amount requested at 36, but we also see a need across all divisions and departments within the city. And then lastly, $600,000 in non-staff supplemental requests as well. So that totaled about $5.6 billion in supplemental requests not funded within this budget here tonight. Looking at the general fund staffing highlights, just reiterate, we have 14 additional staff being added to the budget this year. That's down from, I believe, roughly 27 from last year. But this will be 12 firefighters and two police officers, you can see staggered according to the chart laid out here for you. General fund revenue, looking here, this kind of breaks everything down by classification. I won't hit on every single one, but we'll lead it off with property taxes, which notably we are underneath the quote unquote no new revenue tax rate, which means that according to state law, this is a tax cut. There is additional revenue coming across from that. That's really driven by the increase in assessed value we've seen here in the city over the last year. Next, sales tax, an increase up to 22.3 million, roughly a 1% increase over our base. We did knock this up a little bit in our latest projection. So what you'll see on the 14th is an increase over what we're showing here. But again, just trying to be conservative in our projections based on the economic indicators that we're seeing in front of us. The largest line item increase we see here, it's pretty, pretty large, being the charges for services. And this is really driven by two things. First of all, the TERS tax increment refinancing zone is property tax revenue that comes back to the city as a charge for service. And that reflects here. Also, about a million dollars worth of this is revenue from the Parks and Recreation Department. As COVID-19 affected the community, heading into really early spring of this year, all of the programming for the summer was canceled. And as a result, we saw a pretty significant drop in revenue coming from that department. Budgeted in fiscal year 2021 is a full palette of that, that revenue coming back on as we anticipate and really hope that we have that valuable programming back with us in the summer. Next up, franchise fees, you see a moderate decrease here. That's because of some legislative changes that were made during the last legislative session that took effect halfway through this current fiscal year. So we're really seeing the full year effect of that as it relates to cable and telephone providers. Transfers incoming from other funds, licenses and permits, you see a moderate increase here. Really projecting to kind of stay level with where we were with FY19 as the last kind of standard year, as FY20 was a little bit wonky. I will note that we've seen strong performance in license and permit revenue over the last few months, despite the economic turmoil, if you will, from COVID-19. And then fines and forfeitures, we see another, a pretty big jump here. That's because we've seen a very significant drop in this revenue source driven by COVID-19, less activity out in the community and closed courts have all kind of driven that, that drop in revenue projected for FY20. Again, getting back to some sense of normalcy in FY21. A large drop here in miscellaneous revenue is not something to really be worried about. That miscellaneous revenue came from two non-recurring sources. The first is a FEMA reimbursement from Hurricane Harvey. It's way back in 2017 when that hit. We finally were made whole for, or close to made whole for expenditures that the city invested in the response efforts. And then secondly, the revenue coming from the CARES Act and other federal sources related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We were able to offset some of our staffing costs that are coming back into the general fund. So general fund by expenditures here, we see an increase in public safety primarily driven by that additional staffing being added for both police and fire. General government, that increase of $2 million does include the full cost of the COLA. So that inflates that a little bit. We did share out a new distribution at the last budget meeting. So if you'd like some updated numbers, that is in last budget meetings packet, but as presented here, that's the increase there. Parks and Recreation, probably the next one worth hitting on, just adding back in those expenditures related to those programming options that were canceled this year because of COVID-19. Again, budgeting for that full palette of valuable programming to come back on into fiscal year 2021. So roll all that up. And what do we have? We have a net addition of $350,000 in fund balance coming into the general fund. With the budget you'll see at the next meeting, and that'll actually increase with some of the updated revenue projections that we show. But most notably, if you, if you go to the bottom here, you see our policy recommendation, two months recurring. That's 16.666%. That is the absolute minimum of the range set forth by council between two and three months. This represents $4.5 million over that policy minimum. So we're working our way towards that 25%. That net add to fund balance. Want to make sure that we point out that this is about 22.4% of our expenditures, which is a healthy fund balance and a step towards, or as Lee said, relatively close to that 25% that we've, that we've outlined. Want to also reiterate that we have an excellent credit rating through Moody's and Fitch. Moody's notably removed our negative outlook and confirmed us as stable back in July 2020. They noted in their analysis that that was because of our proactive measures that we took to, to deal with COVID-19 financially and otherwise, and because of the concerted effort made by the city to add fund balance over the last few fiscal years. This is a structurally balanced budget, and most notably of all, maintains our core services in the face of, you know, obvious continued revenue challenges with COVID-19 and uncertainty writ large across the budget. Looking at the debt service fund, the other half of that property tax, property tax rate. We see here that we are projecting a drawdown of $1.1 million that is planned. We had a beginning fund balance of about 6 million, drawing down to just under $5 million, which will put us about $600,000 over our, our policy minimum in a very nice position where we're upholding those bond covenants, making sure that we have enough fund balance here to be agile and make sure that we're fulfilling those requirements, while we're not holding too much cash on hand here as a whole. Property-supported debt to assessed valuation, always a favorite chart that we throw out today. I will add that there's a more detailed chart in some of the materials shared throughout the budget discussions. But this here shows us the pattern really coming from fiscal year 2012 to present. A drop from the 4.77% debt to assessed value to about 3% in fiscal year 2020. I'll note that that increase is driven primarily by the bond projects that are coming on board that were voter approved in 2019, as well as TERS increment refinancing zone debt, which is scheduled as a balloon payment out when the TERS reimburses the city for that interest included in 2029. So all of that to say that we are well positioned according to the city's financial advisor and credit ratings. You know, 5% is where we need to start worrying, and you can see where we're well below that threshold here. So looking at the projected tax rate, I will add, you can see there's a lot of information on this slide, not just the tax rate itself, that there's a lot of factors that go into projecting this out, and that this is all based around structured principle, a structure on the debt. So that means that we will structure that principle. So we're paying it off a little bit less before the tax increment refinancing zone expires in 2029. That allows it to be a little more equitable, flatten out that tax rate a little bit. But you can see we're projecting to go up to 44.10 cents going out to fiscal year 2024. You can see the debt to assessed value all the way to the right, increasing before dropping off in 2024 as well. Looking at the enterprise fund, that's the water and sewer fund. The highlights here, the cybersecurity training, you see the other half of that from general fund. We also see a CCTV mainline inspection system for public works and the amount of $130,000. The right-of-way inspector with vehicle for $89,000, and then an administrative assistant for $54,000. Lastly, discussed at the last city council meeting, we have a utility billing team coming on board for $109,000. That'll include two billing specialists and a reclassification of the lead billing specialist to a billing supervisor. You can see here, it's staff adds total of four, two from utility billing, one for the administrative assistant, one for the right-of-way utility inspector. Major expenditures here, you see outlined just the big chunks of money and where that's going. $391,000, almost 392 for our supplemental requests, replacement vehicles in the neighborhood of $945,000. Purchase of water, obviously a big part of what we do, 6.2 million, and then annual debt service of $23.7 million as well. That is relative to the total expenditures of $64.4 million. And you can see here, enterprise fund broken out by division, other requirements being the largest component here. That's because other requirements has the debt component within it. It also has transfers to other funds within it as well. So there's a lot going on there that is broken out in the materials that we've shared prior. And then dropping down to water production, that's where the purchase of water really generating that, that's ultimately sold to customers comes as well. Water and sewer rate comparison, you can see here, this expanded a little bit from the initial presentation to include some neighboring cities. But you can see the city of Pearland here, current and proposed staying flat. This example here is a $6,000, 6,000 gallon, excuse me, customer with the amount of $73.58. Just showing some comparison cities in the area to give some perspective on where we stand relative to all of these with some footnotes here. Relative to some increases proposed this fiscal year, just given the time of year, we wanted to make sure that was apparent here. So all of that rolls up to our enterprise fund here, that we have the total ending cash equivalent to $19.5 million. We have probably most notably, we are covered on our bond coverage, 1.4, which is compared to, or 1.46 compared to the 1.4 minimum. That cash reserve ratio, 25% more than that here. Want to again, visit our kind of success factors and what we should be paying attention to. We are exceeding our policy minimums. We're maintaining our core services. And we are maintaining that excellent, you know, Moody's and Fitch credit ratings that were affirmed in July 2020. Also worth noting, zero rate increase as well, should probably be up there, which is a notable development here as well. New this year, our water and sewer debt fund here, not the most exciting thing to look at, but I will draw attention down to that bond coverage ratio again at 1.46, 1.46 succeeding at 1.4. This maintains our excellent credit rating and similar to the general fund, just creates a separate and distinct fund for water and sewer debt. So we can talk about those in two components, similar to the general fund side, make it a little bit cleaner and hopefully easier to understand. Lastly, fee updates. As a typical part of the process, we, we reach out to city staff to, to ask them to take a look at the fees we're assessing and make sure that they're still appropriate and, and in line with where we want to be. These are adopted by ordinance in September as well. Starting here, we have the addition of the backflow prevention assembly test report fee, along with a hydrant meter cost recovery fee and the after-hours processing fee as well. On the next page, we have the broken lock fee, which was updated to $100 pursuant to city council direction and consensus, which will be updated on the next reading. New service fee, really just renaming that there. And then the first subsequent processing fee, again, changed by direction of city council, and we will have that updated on the second. I'm sorry, on the first and second reading coming in September as well. Lastly, and probably most importantly on the fee updates is the water winter quarter average verbiage change that we had here. Based on conversation with city council, that is really now a cap rather than a set amount for customers to pay. So the winter quarter average is based on a, an average usage by each customer. In the past, that was just billed as a flat amount. Now if a customer uses less than that average, they're going to pay less than that average. With new residents or new, new customers as well, used to be $12,000 would just be billed. Now if they're using less than that 12,000 gallons, it's going to be that actual usage rather than the winter quarter average. With that, I will just outline our next steps here. We'll be back on the 14th. I noted several changes that'll be coming with that. We'll have those changes along with exhibit A and updated follow-up information based on feedback from the last city council meeting. So with that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Pearson.
And Mr. Mayor, that's our presentation and kick it to you for the conducting the public hearing. I believe there's one speaker, and then we can circle back to wrap up if that's your pleasure. Thanks, sir.
Okay, good. Silver. Moving into our agenda to item number five, we have an opportunity for citizens to make a few comments. I'll ask our mayor pro tem to introduce them.
Thank you, Mayor. We only have one speaker signed up for tonight. Jeb Huntley, please state your name and your address, and you should have a clock on your screen here in a minute. When you see that clock, go ahead and start speaking.
Hey, thank you. My name is Jeff Huntley. I reside at 3912 Oakwood Drive, North, Pearland, Texas, 77581. I had a citizen bring something to my attention, and I said I would get clarification on this item. It is in regards to the solid waste fund. According to book one of the budget, page 86 of the 221-page PDF, the contract for solid waste allows for service rates to adjust annually to the reported consumer price index for Houston MSA. According to the CPI for the Houston area, the change for all urban consumers, all items have gone down 0.2% from the previous year. The proposed budget says the waste management has asked for a 3% increase effective October 2020. Is the city intending to allow the increase? Because the budget appears to indicate so. A 3% increase is not supported by the Consumer Price Index data for Houston, and I respectfully request that they not be allowed to increase their rates. If the contract points to a different index, please indicate what index that is. And perhaps in the future, the URL for the index can be provided in the budget documents. I know I have spoken out against 2% COLA multiple times, and many citizens, including myself, still believe this 1.4 million should be removed from the budget at this time. If a yearly 2% COLA has been customary, then these employees have already received previous increases last year with no performance rating system in place. I suggest focusing on incorporating a goal-based rating system for this coming year, and then apply a bonus to those individuals who met their goals. This across-the-board increase needs to be terminated. Finally, in last week's meeting, we heard from the utility billing manager, Nancy Massey, who seemed very knowledgeable and very willing to fix the water billing issues. Then tonight, you discussed hiring three more people to the utility billing team. I'm sure the people that have heard me speak before know that I'm all about saving money and making sure we get the best value for the taxpayers' money. I also know citizens waited for a long time for a fix blocker with billing, but I wonder if we're throwing too many solutions to a problem too quickly without verifying the results. Last week, there was an agenda item to hire consultants to review the utility billing system processes for $98,000. I think it might be better to monitor the changes to the billing system since the change to the 3230 plan and allow Nancy and her team to gauge these changes and verify the results, and maybe the issues have been corrected. But if there's still issues and tweaks needed, then we can entertain getting an outside consultant to help with that process. Also, by the time Nancy and her team will have better data to give the consultants to help with the review. Hopefully, the billing problem is fixed, and the additional staff can catch future issues, and we could save $98,000. Just a suggestion. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley. Mayor, that completes our citizen comments.
All right, moving in our agenda with item number six. This will provide an opportunity to both the city council and the staff to flesh out some of the items that they want to highlight and initiate a good opportunity for a good discussion. Moving to council first, council member Alondo, give any comments at this point. Moving to council first, Councilmember Alondo, do you have any comments at this point?
No, Mayor, I've provided extensive questions and comments both within the past meetings and over email and phone call and have been very grateful for staff's diligent effort in getting all those back to me. So thank you for all the work, not just putting this together, but making the changes that have been requested by myself and the other members. And I have nothing further at this point.
Good, super. That's my car volume.
Yep, nothing further at this time, Mayor.
All right, moving to council member Little.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, Hernandez.
I've got no questions other than I'm sure we'll get more information on Mr. Hunkle's comments, I guess, in a follow up email or something like that. So other than that, I really have nothing. Thank you, Matt.
Let's remember more.
I have nothing further at this time, Mayor.
All right. Guess remember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just asked staff to follow up with a question from the citizen. Other than that, I'm ready to move forward.
All right. Our voice.
The only thing I've got is just a general question. When the ESDs started are supposed to be starting this week, I mean this this year. And if it is, then where is that located in the budget of the money coming in from the emergency service district?
Right, so we followed up and were able to negotiate contracts. They started collecting property taxes for the two emergency service districts. Council approved those contracts and so that money's been flowing in and that is included in your general fund budget. John, if you know off the top of your head, what charge for services?
It is charges for services through the fire department. I don't know the account number offhand, but you're exactly right, Mr. Pearson.
It's only order magnitude like $700,000, but it's included there.
Okay, is that directed that when it comes in, is it directed back to the fire department or?
No, there is no direction of revenue. All the revenue goes to the general fund and that's where it comes out.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, good. We'll give the staff an opportunity.
Nothing. We'll be back to you on the 14th with the first reading and we'll be following up as we have with interim reports and information for you.
Okay. And moving down to item number seven, which gave me an opportunity to adjourn this public hearing as of 6:59. Goodness, item number eight, and I'll ask City Manager Pearson to lead us off on that.
Thanks, Mayor. So obviously last week, many of us in the area were very concerned with the the two hurricanes that were coming our way. Council is aware of the staff's work and presentations, but thought it'd be helpful to provide a little overview of that. That response and our preparations for that, they are extensive. We dodged not a bullet, but a cannonball with Hurricane Laura. And, you know, it turned out well for us, but obviously we continue to think about our neighbors to the east and want to support them however we can. But from the city of Pearland's perspective, this was another instance where our emergency services, which is everybody in such a circumstance came together. And Chief Riley is going to share a presentation on behalf of not only the incident management team of Unified Command, but also the entire staff that are involved in that. So Chief Riley, please.
Mr. Pearson, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to present an overview, a broad overview of our response to hurricanes Marcos and Laura. Next slide, please. So as we know, it was a double trouble having two storms coming into the Gulf at the same time. And estimates were all over the place. Next. So someone created this to be funny, but actually this is a pretty close representation of all the different models from the hurricanes last week and the week before. So they were all over the place. So made preparing not too challenging. It was just a matter of trying to figure out if it was going to get here or not. Next. So there's four of the keys that we had a successful week in preparing for these storms, investment, training, preparation and teamwork. And as you know, our emergency management office is led by Peter Martin and Melanie Roberts. And they're the ones that kind of keep us lined out and coordinated. And it's not just hurricanes, it's of course all the hazards, both manmade and weather that affect our city. And they support us and guide us and provide great instruction for us to get the team to working together. Next. As far as an investment goes, we learned a lot of different lessons from Hurricane Harvey, the Mr. George Floyd entombment and other events. We've acquired high water vehicles and the PPE, including PPE for the teams that will be working on those vehicles. Our EOC has had pretty significant audio visual and IT improvements, which really shown well during this past week and made making decisions and analyzing data much more convenient. We improved our situational awareness capabilities with real time traffic cameras. We have stream monitoring, the city has many different weather stations scattered across the city at public works facilities and city buildings and fleet locations. Our IT infrastructure continues to grow and improve. And again, all those go back in as an investment and so that we make the best decisions we possibly can. And then we identified an area for a joint information space. You may hear that called a JIC. And it's where we consolidate information externally and internally when having to deal with a disaster. So we did all this investment when the sun was shining. So we'd be ready to go when the hurricanes arrived. Next, please. And of course, what's critical to our operations is training and training and more training. We've learned from Harvey, as you've heard before, the incident command and system and training people to learn those positions and work together. We have high water rescue teams that from all the disciplines, training and working together since Harvey, the police, public works and fire primarily, but supported by other city departments as well. Every city employee is required to take the basic incident command system class. And then there's additional courses beyond that. Beyond that even, there are city employees that take ICS position specifically. So for example, we need a logistics section chief. Then there's an actual training that that person goes to and learns how to handle that part of the incident command system. We have been running ICS actively ever since COVID started and it continued to run throughout our handling of these storms. And then the training and use of communication systems such as Everbridge. And we have a fantastic incident planning software that has really just helped us streamline a lot of processes since Harvey. Next, please. And then there's preparation, tremendous amount of preparation gets involved even before hurricane season, hurricane season. And even during the COVID pandemic. So city departments begin preparing in April, May, they check generator status, fuel supplies, boarding supplies. We update our employee contact lists. The steer registrants have to be contacted. Those are the folks who may have special conditions that they're unable to evacuate from the Pearland regional area. And so we work with Brazoria County and coordinate and set up when necessary a transportation hub at the recreation center and auditorium. Again, that's not for necessarily mass evacuation, but in particular for those steer registrants as a hub. So that we get them on buses and get them out of the hazardous area. And also before the event, we're constantly maintaining situational awareness and communicating. And then we also have mutual aid partners in our area should they be needed. Next, please. Here's a sample of the timeline. We started looking at the storms Thursday, August 20th. An incident management team was established and we just started monitoring the weather. And I'm not going to go through all these various components, but you can see as the days went by, we became more and more involved as a team. And in monitoring the situation and beginning to prepare, establishing early objectives, actually Saturday, August 22nd. And from those objectives, we start developing the tactics that we need to support those objectives. And you can go see all the way, once we get ramped up and running, you can't just shut the thing down that quickly because we might miss out on some important things such as financial paperwork and those types of items. And so Thursday, August 27th, we went into what we call the demobilization period that lasts until I believe the end of this week and we'll gather all of our paperwork and finalize that. So in case we need to apply for FEMA reimbursement, we'll be ready to provide them with the necessary information. Next, please. Teamwork's critical in this photo. We're over at the public safety building. And if you know some of the folks in this photo, it's one of the planning meetings and there's a many different representatives from the different departments there. Next, please. You know, every day our frontline operations, our organization, here's an example of the police department, public works and the fire department. And we could handle the storms staying in this framework. It's just not very efficient or very effective, or it could be more effective and efficient at least. And so we change into what we call the incident management team and an incident management system using unified command. Next slide, please. So this is a FEMA slide and I could not change the public health department, but you get the idea that in unified command, the different departments, directors or an incident commander from that department get together. And we identify common objectives that impact all of the departments. For example, the high water teams are cross departmental. We want to make sure that we don't have all the departments ordering the same resources when we can order them all together in the logistics sections and then share those out. It's much more cost effective that way. Next slide, please. So in this case, the unified command for this particular incident was the fire chief, police chief and director of public works and unified command supported by a policy group. Mayor Reed and City Manager Pearson and Deputy City Manager Branson. And then you can see in the various positions, they're cross departmental. And so this is where the teamwork comes together. And when we're operating in unified command, we know what each other's needs are and how to support each other. Next slide, please. And here's the operations section, which gets even more complex and has even more employees from various departments working together. You can see what it takes to set up the hub to evacuate steer registrants is quite a few teams and team leaders. And so this is just, this was the operations section and this actual this section would have changed the configuration. There would have been much more added to it, should the hurricane have actually come to Pearland. Next slide, please. So in summary, the advantages of using a unified command system is we all have a single set of objectives. The planning section guides us through that. We collectively approach the situation. The information flow and coordination are improved because you have the various departments all working together in this format. We can grow it, we can shrink it as necessary. This past week was a great example of we ramped up, we had the hub ready to go and deploy if it was necessary to evacuate the steer registrants. Fortunately, we never got past that point. And so we were able to very quickly ramp this operation down. So in unified command, all departments with responsibility for the incident, they understand those joint priorities and restrictions. No department's legal authorities or responsibilities are compromised or neglected. The department still exists. We're just jointly sharing resources, ideas and information. And so you get a combined effort from all the city departments under one plan that everyone follows together. And I'd like to take the opportunity on behalf of the unified command to thank all the city staff that spent numerous hours making it a very successful week. And we're glad that we didn't need to go further with the plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief. You know, that gives you a flavor for the quality, the professionalism. Starts with our leadership there at the director level, but it goes throughout the organization. You know, just very proud of everybody's work and abilities and readiness and willingness to chip in wherever they needed. We had people doing different things, which is what it takes and and we were definitely ready and we've learned a lot. We're always looking to get better, never think we know everything. And so that's a part of our culture and and why I think we do such a good job at these things. So nothing to add, Mayor. I don't know, Mayor, you were over there for a little bit. Feel free, add on or correct anything that we said here.
I'm sorry, I was quite impressed with the whole process. I really believe that the when Laura started looking, coming in, looking at the unified command system, we had changed the mind, went different direction. Because this staff has, our city is very fortunate to have the employees that we have that fit into this unified command system. That it was, it's quite, quite impressive. And we're very lucky to have people who know how to put these things together, particularly the unified command system, plus other issues that we faced on a cost basis. And the fact that there were so many people who gave their time. Were very dedicated to what they were doing and very, very professional in the approach to the job that they had to accomplish to make sure to keep Laura out of our yard. And apparently they did a pretty good job, Bill. Clay, I think if we'd, if we had keep this team together, because I understand that today Peter Gordon, who's our emergency management coordinator says that the map as of the day had three candidates up in the Atlantic area that we can, we can play with in the future. We'll learn more about that as time goes by. And I want to thank you, Clay, for putting together the team that we have and for the guys that led it and for the guys who were part of it. It's, we're just blessed to have a team that we have in place. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
I didn't know whether council had any questions or not at this point, but it was very impressive. Council, have you a question to comment at this point? Well, let's move down to item number nine. Which gives me an opportunity to adjourn our meeting tonight. At, let me see what it says here, 7:13. And this is not the last one we have, there'll be others. So please tune in in the future. This is your city, this is your staff. And together, I think we can make sure that our employees and our citizens are going to be very, very used with the results that we get in the end product. Thank you so much. We are.